Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission's Special Meeting, the Second Budget Hearing here for September 12, 2024. We have a quorum, and before we begin, I would ask you all to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst is on his way. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Here.
Mayor Trentalles?
Here. So we have a quorum. So we have a number of items to review tonight. Start out with Budget One. I would ask for an introduction of resolutions only for Budget One and Budget Two.
So, BGT One is for the Central Wastewater Region Large User Rate.
Yes, yeah. Budget One, Central Region, Wastewater Large User Rate. Anyone have any questions with regard to that? There being none, call the roll.
I just need an introduction.
I'm sorry to hear you.
I just need an introduction.
Introduce.
Oh, I'm sorry. Introduce.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida approving setting a rate per 1,000 gallons of wastewater treated for the fiscal year 2025 for all large-user wastewater customers of the Central Wastewater Region, providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst not present. Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Budget Two, Community Investment Plan. If there are no questions, if someone would like to introduce that resolution?
Introduce.
Introduce. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida approving and adopting a final five-year community investment plan for the period beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2029, appropriating the portion of the community investment plan for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025, reappropriating the unspent community investment plan project balances at the end of the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024, for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025, and providing for severability and an effective date.
All right, before we begin, I was just handed people who've signed up to speak. This would be on this particular budget item. Paul Renison?
Here, sir.
Come on up. What is that?
It's one of the official city documents. Is this a Zoom meeting?
Well, it's not Zoom, but it is broadcast. Yeah.
But we don't have a Elmo.
Yeah, yeah. So push the button at the bottom of the mic, at the bottom of the mic.
That's here.
Yes.
I got it. Okay. Speaking to the five-year budget item, this resolution adopting the final five-year community investment plan. I'm Paul Renison, live in the Landings at 3111 Northeast 57th Court, Fort Lauderdale, Florida since 1993. Speaking to this issue, and we'll speak to two more during the hearings today, there's a question about the process. And while we can't show the viewing audience, the Budget Overview of the Annual Budget Process is a booklet that was sent out in the spring for all the citizens to participate in the budget process. Two pages, well done. It was a lot of work to suggest that the individual person could participate in the budget process. So to get focused quickly, the real fun begins in June. I'm quoting, "The city will release detailed budget information through preliminary budget memo, including department budgets, key department performance metrics, et cetera." And at the bottom, it says, "The city staff will share the budget and solicit feedback through several mediums, including meetings, online transparency tools, social media to build consensus for a variety of stakeholders, including you, specifically a resident of the City of Fort Lauderdale." Well, this year I endeavored to do this. I attended advisory board meetings, only to see they used up all their time and adjourned, not hearing from the public. Actually, attended with you, Mayor and Vice Mayor Commissioners, the joint workshop. And you might remember, I was there at Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport, waited patiently as a few other people did. We did not get to speak. So the process does not include the citizen, and that's the problem. In the Landings, we could have a five-year program. It requires 50,000 or more, et cetera. This resolution is regarding additional funds. We have projects that have been brought forward by our community activists for undergrounding, for supporting the police department with data cameras, and much more. So I've got my three minutes, so.
No, can I interrupt you just for a second?
Sure.
You're saying that you were not, you were, you came to a meeting and you were not allowed to speak?
I went to more than one meeting.
You came to a meeting for the City Commission and you were not allowed to speak?
I went to the joint workshop.
Yeah.
Meeting.
Did you sign up?
I did. I was in the audience. I had lunch with everybody else. That was the one at Executive Airport.
When was that?
That was, that was early in the process.
In June?
The Executive Airport, yes.
Was that our goal-setting one? The goal-setting?
That's right.
That was in January?
No, no. It's, it was later in the process.
Well, because I just want you to know that whenever I'm given a slip of paper for someone who signed up to speak, I always give them the right to speak.
Right, but that wasn't a public hearing.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mayor. That was not a public hearing. That was a joint workshop.
Right.
Where you can attend in the gallery, but you're not guaranteed the right to speak unless someone on the floor yields to you. And there was a couple of people yielded in the budget hearing process with your staff. So that was just one meeting. I went to two more, but I didn't take notes and details on it. I thought the process would involve me later on. It did not. So I'm just bringing it onto the record. We have activists in the Landings that have good projects. They can use these five-year plans. They comply with the requirements, which I won't delay the hearing over that.
Have you attempted to convey your sentiments to your district commissioner?
That, we did. But he tells us why it can't happen, why we can't enable this process, and we were surprised to learn there's a five-year capital improvement plan.
Here he is now. You walked in just at the right time, John.
Right. Timing is everything, man.
All right, well, I've already begun the meeting.
So that's my time, Mayor, and I'll be speaking two more times, so.
No, no, stay there.
Okay.
So Mr. Renison has come here today and said that he had, on behalf of his neighborhood, the Landings, had wanted to participate in the public involvement with the budget, and that his neighborhood has a number of capital improvement projects that he thought should be considered. And I said, "Have you, have you tried to work through your commissioner?" And he said, "Yes," and that's when you walked in. So do you recall having any conversations with this gentleman or the Neighborhood Association? I hate to put you on the spot. You just walked in, so.
No, no problem, Mayor. So there have been a number of requests that have been made. Some of them are feasible, some of them are not feasible. I've had conversations with Susan and with Laura regarding those. Not everything made it into the budget this year, as we all know. This is a bit of a tight year. We had a variety of other commitments and obligations that we've made, and not everything got funded in the CIP that we would like to have seen make it in this year. That doesn't mean it's not going to make it into future ones, but, you know, not everything that was on our wish list made it in.
And Mayor, I might add, you mentioned undergrounding, and that is a separate process. It wouldn't have been included in the CIP. I can give you my card, and there's an application process, et cetera.
I'll speak to that one separately in the separate item. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. That's it. Thank you for coming and speaking to us now.
You're welcome.
Okay, very good. Anyone else wish to speak on Budget Two? Okay. Has it been introduced? Yes, it has. You're about to call the roll. Okay. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and Budget Two is now approved. Before I begin on Budget Three, please note that there is an adjustment to the exhibit, Exhibit Number Two, to correct a Scrivener's error. Do you know what the Scrivener's error was?
It was the date.
What's that?
The date. It should have said 25, and it said 24.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, Budget Three, Regarding Stormwater Non-Advalorm Assessment. This is the public hearing on the Stormwater Management Program Assessment. The purpose of the hearing is to receive questions and comments regarding the city's Stormwater Management Program Non-Advalorm Assessment for fiscal year 2025. That's the correction?
Correct.
The public hearing is now open, and the acting city manager will now present the Stormwater Management Program Assessment Report. Susan?
Thank you, Mayor. The Stormwater Management Program Assessment funds the planning, construction, operation, maintenance, and administration of the stormwater management system. The Stormwater Management Program Assessment rate will be equal to the estimated cost paid by the city to operate the Stormwater Management Program with the assessment area for fiscal year 25. The fiscal year 25 Stormwater Management Program Assessment is estimated to generate $36,541,453 in revenue, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Now, this is the time for anyone in the public to speak or ask any questions about the Stormwater Management Assessment. I have Mercedes Gregorio, who's signed up to speak.
Good afternoon.
Press the button at the bottom of the speaker. There you go.
Good afternoon. My name is Mercedes Gregorio, for the record, 1665 Southwest 29th Avenue, and I came here because I got a notification from the mail, basically saying that this was a public hearing, and I searched low and high, and I couldn't find any documents specific to what this budget is for or how this budget is going to be implemented. I was severely affected by the flood that happened last year. My house flooded knee-deep inside, not to mention the road reached four feet in height, and it was severely, severely bad. Now, I wish my neighbor was here to speak on her experience, because she's lived next door for the past 30 years, and her house has flooded not once, not twice, three times. This, this last year was a third time. And my concern with this is, you know, there's a request for additional funds, but there should be some consideration to what's already existing out there. There is existing infrastructure that should be maintained by the city and hasn't. There is a plat that I brought to be able to present to you guys. And if you notice in that plat, there is a swale. There's a 25-foot swale that should be a swale. And my neighbor has been leading most of the efforts, and the only thing that was installed was a yard drain. That's not sufficient enough. You know, as a resident, all of the residents on my block have been maintaining this 25-piece, 25-foot land, and the city nor the county wants to take ownership for it. And it's quite frustrating, because it's cost that's being, it's being pushed on the residents, but if you're asking for more money, like, where, where is this being accounted for, is where my concern is. So I have a lot of questions as to where the money is going, you know? Why hasn't this been taken into consideration? I've reached out to the city engineer. My neighbor has reached out, and quite frankly, there hasn't been much done. There's, the piece of land is there to be able to make the drainage swell, and that will help. That will help.
This is in Chula Vista, right?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone from Public Works wants to respond to this?
And I think Dr. Gassman is coming up, but I know that there's a project we've been talking about at Chula Vista.
Mercedes, thank you for coming, and we'll see if we can get some answers for that.
Good evening, Dr. Nancy Gassman, Deputy Public Works Director.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Chula Vista is one of the areas that we will be looking at and have been looking at under the second phase of the Stormwater Master Plan under the city's Fortify Lauderdale program. And so we are working through the design work right now to determine the additional drainage improvements that we can make in many neighborhoods throughout the city, 17 exact, but Chula Vista is one of those neighborhoods.
So, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
A couple things. Okay, so that's part, you know, they have that original seven, that's eight, and then the next 17.
Right.
From what I've gathered, this is going to be part of that second group.
That's correct.
That we've added, we've doubled the amount of money we put into it, adding funds to expedite that, correct, Mayor? To get this done, I mean, much quicker than we thought, but this is included there, right?
Chula Vista is one of the neighborhoods.
So is this $36 million a part of the first tranche or the second tranche?
It's actually a little of both. So this includes debt service for the $200 million that we've already issued, and then we're looking at issuing another $500 million, plus the additional operating expenses associated with maintaining the things we've done. So it's a combination of both.
So, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
So you are on, I mean, obviously, you're on, we've identified it, you are part of the next priority up there, and these things do take time, unfortunately.
I understand. I'm an engineer.
Oh, yeah, okay, you know, so.
I know.
But, okay, go ahead.
So the, the design work is underway for, for this next set of neighborhoods now.
Okay, so to answer your question, you are on, you are, you are on our radar, and we're in the design phase right now, but your other question was, "Why don't you maintain the stuff that we have there already?" That was your second question. So I don't know exactly what you have there right now. You said you have a 25-foot swale?
25-foot?
You have a 25-foot swale running along?
So it's supposed to be a 25-foot swale. If you look at the plat, it's already existing, and over the course of the years, it's just never been maintained. The county doesn't want to take responsibility over it, and then the city doesn't want to really take responsibility over it. But when you search on the property appraiser, it doesn't show who has ownership over it. So it's just a piece of land that shows there that does not have any ownership, and then it's just who takes responsibility for it, you know? And I, I can't agree to paying taxes on something that is already existing there that has never been maintained and has been a cost to me.
Where, where on this is that? I see a 25-foot where it says Coral Lake, and I see 25 feet where it says Blue Lake.
Blue Lake.
Is Blue Lake?
Blue Lake.
Is that a lake?
So on, it's not. It's supposed to be a drainage swale.
Okay.
So if you look in that, in that entire neighborhood, there are supposed to be drainage swales. They just have never been maintained. So if you look on every single street on the plat, each one of them is supposed to have a drainage swale, but everyone over the course of the years of the past, I want to say at least 30 years, because that's what my neighbor has told me, she's been there longer than I have, everyone has kind of filled it in and taken it in as their, an additional property, and then it's not serving its purpose that it needs to.
Well, according to this, it's not part of, it's not owned by the property owner.
It's not.
You're right. The, the dark line indicates the, the boundary of those lots, and it does not include Blue Lake. So under those circumstances, Dr. Gassman, who would be responsible for that section? Do you know?
So I'm not familiar with this specific issue. Generally speaking, swales that are associated with an upland property are the responsibility of the property owner to maintain.
So I guess that's our, that's our response, then.
But I would need to look at this specific issue. Our residents stated both county and city, there are, the jurisdiction of the stormwater in any given area depends on the ownership of the roadway, and if the ownership of the roadway is county, then the drainage is the jurisdiction. In the Riverland Woods, Riverland area generally, and in some locations in Chula Vista specifically, there are private roadways, and so then the drainage ends up being a responsibility of the residents.
So could you take her information?
I absolutely will have that conversation.
One other thing, just a follow-up. Susan and I have, excuse me, the city manager, a little more formal.
Susan's good.
And I have spoken. We've had, we've had, this is, this issue that you bring up, the side issue of the city-county, I mean, especially in your area out west, there's some areas that are city, some are county, that we don't have jurisdiction over. We were trying to work through that to get a better communication, Susan, and is this one of those spots that, that's the overlap that's falling through the cracks?
So I don't know about falling through the cracks. I remember having a discussion with Colonel Dodd. Specifically, I was trying to find it on my email on my phone, but I couldn't. So Dr. Gassman will get that information, and then we'll, we'll follow up. We did do some work on an alley in between some of those properties, and, and we were looking at maybe a couple of small projects, but again, I just couldn't find it on my phone. So we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you. And you'll follow up with Dr. Gassman for us. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, I just want to state for the record that I do not support this.
Do not support what?
This budget to be approved.
Okay.
And not, not to mention that I think that while the swales, you know, are stating that it's the property's responsibility, the property owner's responsibility, if the swales would have been maintained the way they should have, it wouldn't have been filled, and we wouldn't need this budget.
Okay, so, so let me explain a little bit about what this budget item is. The money has already been allocated under a previous vote of the commission to apply the, those funds to do the drainage projects that include your neighborhood. So you're saying you, you would have voted against the, that allocation of money to improve your drainage system in your neighborhood?
Yes, because I do not have enough information to be able to support it.
All right, well, it's already been done, though. This is just to support the, the carrying costs of the loan.
How long is this for?
How long is this for? I don't know, 20 years?
Well, typically, we'll borrow for 30 years.
30 years.
So it's to increase taxes for the next 30 years?
It's not to increase taxes, it's to increase the water, the advalorm assessment.
Or the stormwater.
Stormwater assessment.
Right, which will affect my property taxes. That's the reason why I'm here.
Yeah.
It's going to increase.
But it's not your taxes. It's a separate, it's on your water bill.
It's.
Oh, is it taxes?
This is, this is a special assessment.
Oh, special assessment, okay, it's a special.
A non-advalorm.
Okay, it's a special line item, not, not included in your taxes, right? But it is part of your advalorm assessment against your property, yes.
Yes, so then I'd have to pay for that for the next 30 years, as opposed to if I were to do the own, my own work to fix the drainage swales.
This isn't just swales.
No, I know, but like.
This is underground pipes and, and storm drains and all of that.
And I understand, and I understand what you're saying.
Swales are inadequate to, to be able to drain streets that we thought were, were adequate once before, but with, with climate change and more intense storms, those systems no longer work, so we're doing more than just digging holes in front of your street and hoping that the water drains down.
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
But I just can't say that I support paying for something for 30 years without properly understanding the engineering behind it.
And so Dr. Gassman will be happy to explain that to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, there being none, so do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. So the final Stormwater Management Program Assessment rate will be equal to the estimated cost paid by the city to operate the Stormwater Management Program within the assessment area, as provided in the resolution approving the Stormwater Management Program Assessment. So will someone now introduce the resolution adopting the Stormwater Management Program Assessment role for fiscal year 2025?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida relating to the provision of the Stormwater Management Program Assessments in the City of Fort Lauderdale, imposing Stormwater Management Program Assessments against assessed property located in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the assessment role, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Moving on to Budget Four, regarding the Lauderdale Isles Water Management District Assessment, Non-Ad Valorem Assessment. This is the public hearing on the Lauderdale Isles Water Management District Non-Ad Valorem Assessment and Budget. The purpose of the hearing is to receive questions and comments regarding the Lauderdale Isles Water Management District Non-Ad Valorem Assessment and Budget for fiscal year 2025. The budget hearing is now open. The acting city manager will now present the Lauderdale Isles Water Management District Non-Ad Valorem Assessment and Budget.
Thank you, Mayor. The Lauderdale Isles Water Improvement District assesses the residents of this special district to protect water quality of the waterways in Lauderdale Isles. At the district's June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four meeting, the board voted to continue levying an assessment of fifteen dollars per parcel for fiscal year 2025, which will generate eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. The total budget for the district was adopted by the board at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. And this concludes my report.
So this is the time for anyone in the public to speak or ask any questions about the Lauderdale Isles Water Management District Non-Ad Valorem Assessment and Budget. I have one person signed up to speak, Mercedes Gregorio. Are you still want to speak on this one? Where are you? Did she leave?
She's there.
Oh. Mercedes, you wanted to speak on the Lauderdale Isles Water Management District? Okay, all right. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? There being none, would someone please move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. So the final Lauderdale Isles Water Management Non-Ad Valorem Assessment for fiscal year 2025 will be fifteen dollars per parcel within the district. Will someone please introduce the resolution approving the Lauderdale Isles Water Management District Non-Ad Valorem Assessment and Budget for fiscal year 2025?
So moved.
Been moved or introduced?
Been introduced.
Yes.
A resolution.
My mistake.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, levying a non-ad valorem special assessment for fiscal year 2025 on behalf of the Lauderdale Isles Water Management District and approving the budget for the district. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Moving on to Budget Five, this is regarding the Nuisance Abatement Non-Ad Valorem Assessment. This is the public hearing on the Nuisance Abatement Non-Ad Valorem Assessment. Purpose of the hearing is to receive questions and comments regarding the city's nuisance abatement assessment for fiscal year 2025. The public hearing is now open, and the acting city manager will now present the Nuisance Abatement Non-Ad Valorem Assessment Report.
And thank you, Mayor. The nuisance abatement assessment rate will be equal to the actual cost paid by the city to abate the nuisance. The assessment represents a hundred percent cost recovery of the expenses incurred by the city to abate the identified nuisance. The fiscal year 2025 nuisance abatement assessment will generate thirty thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy cents in revenue. And that includes, concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, this is the time for anyone in the public to speak or ask any questions about the nuisance abatement assessment. I have no one who's signed up to speak, anyone wishing to speak on this item? There being none, someone please move to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. So the final nuisance abatement assessment rate will be equal to the actual cost paid by the city to abate the nuisance for each business and residential property as provided in the resolution approving the nuisance abatement assessment. Would someone like to introduce the resolution approving the nuisance abatement assessment role for fiscal year 2025?
Introduced.
It's been introduced, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, imposing nuisance abatement assessments against certain properties located in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a nuisance abatement assessment role and providing for severability, rescission of conflicting resolution provisions, and an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Budget Six, this is the public hearing for the Utility Undergrounding Non-Ad Valorem Assessment. The purpose of the hearing is to receive questions and comments regarding the city's utility undergrounding assessment for the fiscal year 2025. The public hearing is now open, and the acting city manager will now present the Utility Undergrounding Non-Ad Valorem Assessment Report. Susan?
Thank you, Mayor. The fiscal year 2025 Utility Undergrounding Assessment Rate will be equal to the actual debt service for the undergrounding of overhead utilities project within the assessment area. And this is the case La Solas Isles. The assessment amount is one thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and thirty-three cents per equivalent benefit unit, that's EBU. The fiscal year 2025 Utility Undergrounding Assessment is estimated to generate five hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. And that concludes my report.
Okay, so this is the time for anyone in the public to speak or ask any questions about the utility undergrounding assessment, which applies only to the La Solas Isles area.
That is correct.
Mr. Renaiason, you had signed up to speak?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the three minutes to get the, on the record with us. I'm in the landings at thirty-one eleven Northeast Fifty-seventh Court. My name's Paul Renaiason, and I have lived there since nineteen ninety-three. Our community was built in the fifties, and most homes were completed in the middle part of the nineteen sixties. The utilities are above ground. We have a dedicated board member on our HOA. He's relatively quiet, but he's a very dedicated individual, has worked with FPL and the city, I understand, to get an undergrounding process started in the landings and surrounding communities, as appropriate by FPL, to get this undergrounding going. So I was really surprised to see we're seeing it happen in District Two. And we're not seeing any action in District One. So it's just very frustrating, because it was one of the many items I mentioned earlier in this public hearing process that we are not heard in the landings. And I suspect throughout District One, because we're just frustrated we can't get undergrounding going. This gentleman, Scott, he is so dedicated and quiet, doesn't interrupt our meetings. He's a board member, but he is really disappointed. And I could see it in his face in one of our last meetings, that we just can't get our undergrounding going. He's very, like other people have spoken tonight, he's engineering background, knows what he's talking about. And FPL's been on board to do a proposal on the landings. And I think it was in the final stages to get it done. Like I said in the early report, CIP, five-year plan. I don't see where we can't get into the budget process. And that's what I raised when I came in here. We got the process in the mail, went to the meetings, went to Zoom meetings, raised my hand. The city didn't have an accommodation for the Zoom participants to get their questions or chats into the floor of the meetings. Advisory board meetings I'm talking about, which are described in here as a conduit to get the budget process done. So I'll be speaking later to close the meeting and on the budget item eleven.
So let's, let's talk a little bit about that, because I think there's a little disconnect in the understanding of the process when it comes to undergrounding. Susan, do you want to explain that?
Actually, Mayor, if I may, so.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sure, so first, we have spoken at the landings meetings. I attend every board meeting in my district. So I take a lot of offense to the suggestion that I'm not listening to my district. I go to every single board meeting in every single neighborhood all the time. Now, the problem that I have here is folks say, I don't listen to them. I listen to you. I don't agree with you. There's a difference. The problem that you had is that you didn't get enough signatures in your neighborhood to support it. We have a standard for what we do when we're going to go through an undergrounding. Remember, the city doesn't pay for undergrounding. The city is not paying for undergrounding in District Two. The residents in the neighborhoods self-assess. They agree to be assessed for the cost of the undergrounding. Last time I checked, I think it was in the neighborhood of thirty thousand dollars a household. Now, we facilitate that by by making funding available, which then goes on your tax bill for the next thirty years and rides with the property. But as I told you at the time, we have a threshold that we need to have for signatures in the neighborhood, which we didn't get. Now, if we want to go ahead and do another roll call, if you will, in the landings, and see if all your neighborhoods want to pay thirty thousand dollars each for the cost of undergrounding, we're happy to do that. But because you want it, doesn't mean that all your neighbors do. And you haven't been able to convince your neighbors to go along with you on that. That's not our fault.
I would only respond that we don't talk in absolutes in the landings. There's a couple, three people that didn't want a green device on their piece of edge of their property. And then Scott actually said that was pretty much a negotiable thing to get those three people done. That's how close we were, Commissioner Herbst. Now, I just want to say, this is a bigger problem, a macro problem for the city with the franchise agreement with FPL, which is a very complicated agreement of significant revenue both ways, with FPL and the city. So maybe, maybe the mayor wants to address that franchise agreement. Because I think there is plenty of money in an almost one billion dollar budget today for undergrounding in the landings where we're willing to match. Thank you very much.
We would probably spend every bit of that billion dollars to underground all of the city of Fort Lauderdale. If we were to underground every neighborhood in Fort Lauderdale, and the city were to pay for it, we'd be paying for nothing else. It would be a billion dollars to do the entire city.
At least, at least.
Well, that's not what I'm suggesting, Commissioner Herbst.
You were just, I know.
It's not about the city paying for it. It's about FPL, as well, sharing in this advancement of technology to the benefit of all the city participants, especially in the landings where we've been looking to do this for some time.
If if we did that here, they would have to do that in every city in the state of Florida. Okay? Because every one of these has a, what I'll call, me-too provision. All the contracts that FPNL does are basically applicable throughout the entire state. They can't just come in and say, hey, Fort Lauderdale, we like you, we're going to do this for you. What do you think is going to happen in Pompano, Hollywood, Miami, West Palm, all the way up to Jacksonville, and everywhere else in the, in the rest of the state of Florida? Everybody gets treated the same, because their contract has got provisions in it that says if somebody gets a better deal, it applies to them too.
Well, as a former union member, I can say this. When a me-too came clause came up as why we couldn't do what we needed to do to get a contract, we didn't pay any attention to that. That's my personal opinion.
All right, all right, so, so to to just explain it again, you, there is a certain threshold where the community votes, and and a decision is made based on the meeting the threshold. If we cannot meet the threshold, we can't impose this expense, whether it be thirty thousand, twenty thousand, or fifty thousand, whatever it is. So we have to make sure we get that threshold number. Now, the other issue you brought up was the the transformer box, or whatever it's called now. And I think it's every third or fourth house, or something like that. It doesn't go on every house, every, every other, it's like every few houses. And that was a big problem in the Isles. La Solas Isles is also in the, in the Idowile Riviera Isle area. I think that's what's held it up all these years. They were the first ones, Riviera Isle, Idowile, they were the first ones to apply. I was still a commissioner back then, goes, so it goes a bit far back. And the woman that started that effort, she's since moved to Santa Fe. So the point is that it's a very frustrating process, especially if your partner in this, FPNL, is recalcitrant, okay? Dragging its feet, which it did for years. And if it weren't for a couple of very industrious people like you also have in the landings, but they had in the La Solas Isles, this would never have gotten done.
And the new District Two Commissioner.
Yes, exactly. Thank you. I'm sure that helped it.
Following you, yes.
So, are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay, so, but anyway, I would love every street on this, in this city to be undergrounded. We all know that. So the process is arduous, but again, I think that's what you were probably going to say.
And we have a dedicated staff member, Ingrid Kindblum, in Public Works that is coordinating the effort. I will give you my card. Feel free to shoot me an email, and we can get you and Ingrid talking about the process, starting with a straw ballot, and then there's a planning phase.
You've already done that, right?
That's correct, Mayor. Scott's been involved with her directly, and it rings a bell, so.
Great.
The petition, we did it on a petition basis to be a very correct form that nobody could deny.
So what happened? What was the result?
I suspect there's those three, two or three homeowners that had issues about a box.
Did they, did they meet the the threshold?
And we're looking for a hundred percent in our community. Maybe there's a threshold that's.
Yeah, I think it's seventy.
Seventy streets in the landings?
No, it doesn't need.
Seventy percent, how many streets have in the landings?
That takes me, I don't know, it's.
I mean, it's a lot.
It's three hundred and sixty-seven lots, can we put it that way?
Okay, all right, so that's doable.
Oh, yes. Well, thank you for your time, Commissioner.
All right, so talk with Ingrid, see if we can, if we can redo the, redo the petition effort, trying to get, you know, the seventy percent threshold.
Okay.
And we'll go from there, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, you're very welcome. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, there being none, would someone move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. So the final utility undergrounding assessment rate for fiscal year 2025 will be one thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and thirty-three cents per equivalent benefit unit. Does that mean per house?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
All right, would someone like to introduce the resolution approving the utility undergrounding assessment rate for fiscal year 2025? It's been introduced, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, relating to the provision of the utility, underground utility line facilities in the La Solas Isles neighborhood, imposing underground utility line assessments against assessed property located in the La Solas Isles neighborhood in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the assessment role, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
And after many years, I think we're actually slated to have a ribbon cutting for these nine streets in the next few weeks, correct? It's actually almost done.
It's about time. How many years have you been in office?
How many years have you been in office?
Not enough.
Okay, we're getting it done.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Moving on to Budget Seven. This is the public hearing on the Beach Business Improvement District Non-Adverbalum Assessment. Purpose of the hearing is to receive questions and comments regarding the city's Beach Business Improvement District Assessment for fiscal year 2025. The public hearing is now open. The acting city manager will now present the Beach Business Improvement District Non-Adverbalum Assessment Report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Beach Business Improvement District Assessment imposes an assessment on certain portions of beach property to establish funding to support services, facilities, indoor programs, providing a special benefit to business properties in areas within the beach business boundaries. The fiscal year 2025 Beach Business Improvement District Assessment Rate is recommended at .8525 per 1,000 of assessed property value to generate approximately $1,267,604 in revenue. And this concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. So this is the time for anyone in the public to speak or ask questions about the Beach Business Improvement District Special Assessment. No one has signed up to speak. Anyone wish to speak? There being none, would someone like to move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Mayor Trentalos?
Yes. So public hearing is now closed. So the final Beach Business Improvement District Assessment Rate will be .8525 per $1,000 of assessed value for each business property used for commercial purposes as provided in the resolution approving the Beach Business Improvement District Assessment. So would someone like to please introduce the resolution approving the Beach Business Improvement District Annual Rate Resolution for fiscal year 2025? It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida relating to the provision of beach business improvement services in a portion of the city, re-imposing beach business improvement assessments against assessed property located within the assessment area for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, establishing the rate of assessment, approving the assessment role, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Budget Eight, this is the public hearing on the fire assessment. Purpose of the hearing is to receive questions and comments regarding the city's fire assessment for fiscal year 2025. Public hearing is now open. The acting city manager will now present the fire assessment report.
Thank you, Mayor. The fire assessment program provides funding for fire suppression services, facilities, and programs that will benefit the city in its entirety, such as fire facility improvements, equipment, and cost of operations to fund the city's fire services and facilities. The residential assessment rate is recommended at $328 per year, and note that that is $10 less than the previous year. Non-residential properties are assessed based on building classification and square foot ranges. For fiscal year 2025, the proposed assessment is $53,590, $517, which is estimated to generate $51,446,896 in revenue to the general fund. That concludes my report.
So what happens to the difference?
No, it just reduced. The full cost assessment was reduced.
This year?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, so this is the time for anyone to speak or to ask any questions about the fire assessment. Is Mercedes still here?
No.
She left? Okay, she has signed up to speak. Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? There being none, someone please move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, so public hearing is now closed on Budget Eight. So the final fire assessment rate will be $328 annually for each residential property, and the final fire assessment rate for non-residential properties shall be as shown on the detailed rate schedule provided in the resolution approving the fire assessment. Would someone please introduce the resolution adopting the fire assessment rate and role for fiscal year 2025?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida relating to the provision of fire rescue services, facilities, and programs in the city, establishing the rate of assessment, imposing fire rescue assessments against assessed properties located in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the assessment role, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Moving on to Budget Nine. This is the second of two public hearings as required by law on the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District Millage Rate and budget for fiscal year 2025. Purpose of the hearing is to receive questions and comments regarding the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District's budget and to explain the budget and any amendments thereto. The public hearing is now open, and the acting city manager will now present the final millage rate and final budget.
And thank you, Mayor. The Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District taxes the residents of this special district to provide security to their neighborhood. At their May 14, 2024 meeting, the district voted their millage at 1 mil to generate a tax collection of $201,660 to support an operating budget of $201,660. This millage rate is 5.3% more than the rollback rate of .9497 mils and is necessary to maintain services for the Sunrise Key Neighborhood District. And this concludes my report on Sunrise Key.
Okay, thank you. So this is the time for anyone in the public to speak or ask questions about the millage rate or budget regarding Sunrise Key. Is there anyone here from Sunrise Key or anyone wish to speak on this? No one has signed up. So would someone please like to move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. The final millage rate for the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District will be 1 mil, 1.00 mil, which will represent an increase of 5.30% over the rollback rate of .9497 mils. Someone please introduce the resolution adopting the final millage rate for the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District for fiscal year 2025?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida adopting the final millage rate of 1 mil to be levied by the City of Fort Lauderdale for the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, and so the final millage rate is now approved. So will someone introduce a resolution adopting the final budget for the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District for fiscal year 2025?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida adopting the final budget of $201,660 for the Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, and that final budget is now approved on second reading.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, those were both votes for Budget Number Nine, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We're on Budget Ten now.
Okay.
All righty. So Budget Ten, this is the second of two public hearings as required by law on the millage rates for the fiscal year 2025. This is for the entire city. Purpose of the hearing is to receive requests and comments regarding the city's millage rate and to explain any amendments thereto. The public hearing is now open, and the acting city manager will now present the final millage rate on which the fiscal year 2025 budget is based.
Thank you, Mayor. The fiscal year 2025 City of Fort Lauderdale final budget includes maintaining the current millage rate of 4.1193 and decreasing the combined debt service millage from .2737 to .2545 mils. The recommended millage rate of 4.1193 exceeds the rollback rate of 3.8408 by 7.25%. The aggregate final millage rate, including the Sunrise Key dependent district, is 4.1229, which results in an increase of 7.25% above the aggregate rollback rate of 3.8443, and is premised upon the following. Funding increases in wages and insurances, funding key commission priorities and community investment plan projects, and maintaining a healthy fund balance. Increases in the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget that require maintaining the millage rate at the same rate as the prior 17 years, and that's, this is the 18th year of that same millage rate include 12.6 million for the increase in fridge benefits such as health insurance and pension contributions, 10.5 million for the increase in salaries and wages, and 2.6 million for the increase in insurance expense. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So this is the time for anyone in the public to speak or ask questions about the final millage rates. No one has signed up to speak. Is there anyone wish to speak on this? Okay, there being nobody, someone like to move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, so public hearing is now closed. All right, so the recommended millage rate to be levied for all general city purposes exclusive of debt service will be 4.1193, which represents a 7.25% increase in the millage rate over the rollback rate of 3.8408 mils. The aggregate final millage rate, including dependent districts, is 4.1229, which results in an increase of 7.25% above the aggregate rollback rate of 3.8443 mils. The recommended millage rate for debt service for the 2015 general obligation refunding bonds is .0189. The recommended millage rate for debt service for the 2011A general obligation bonds is .0193. The recommended millage rate for debt service for the city's voter-approved public safety bond is .0856. And the recommended millage rate for debt service for the city's voter-approved Parks Bond is .1307. All right. Would someone please introduce the resolution regarding adopting the final millage rates for the city of Fort Lauderdale for the fiscal year 2025?
Introduced.
Okay. It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida adopting the final operating millage rate of 4.1193 and debt service millage rate of .2545 to be levied by the City of Fort Lauderdale for fiscal year Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, so the millage rates are now approved. Finally, we come on to the Budget Eleven, which regards the final budget discussion. This is the second of two public hearings as required by law on the city of Fort Lauderdale's budget for fiscal year 2025. Purpose of the hearing is to receive requests and comments regarding the city's budget and to explain the budget and any amendments thereto. The public hearing is now open, and the acting city manager will now present the final budget.
Thank you, Mayor. The fiscal year 2025 City of Fort Lauderdale final budget includes maintaining the same millage rate of 4.1193 and decreasing the annual fire assessment rate by $10 to $328 per residential unit. The final budget is premised on the following. Funding increases in wages and insurances, funding key commission priorities and community investment plan projects, maintaining a healthy fund balance. There have been no adjustments to the fiscal year 2025 budget since the approval of the tentative budget on September 3, 2024. And that concludes my report on the fiscal year 2025 final budget.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. This is the time for anyone in the public to speak or ask questions about the final budget. Mr. Renison, do you want to speak? Please come. Yeah. Mr. Cox, you're just here for questions. Okay, thank you. Always good to see you, sir. Yes. Push the button, yeah.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Paul Renison, Landings, 3111 Northeast 57th Court. As you know from earlier in the meeting, I came here primarily regarding this magazine. And the audience can see it, the viewers can't see it, but it's the Fort Lauderdale Connect, City of Fort Lauderdale, your key to the city. And it was published in spring of 2024. Yes, I know that's after the first January budget workshop, but there were three budget workshops talked about in this magazine. And I attended one in person and another, I believe, by Zoom. And the Zooms weren't acknowledged in that hearing. And in the budget workshop, that's the commission and the budget advisory board, BAB, they call it when they're combined. You know, the public wasn't given a chance to talk. Now, this whole magazine suggests that the individual be part of the city's budget process. To me, as an individual taxpayer of the city of Fort Lauderdale, period. So I go through the whole document, and down here it says online transparency tools. We know they didn't work. So that's one of them. And then it turns out, we're having an election. And former Mayor Jack Seiler always used to say, we have one person to speak to the budget, and that was me. You might remember that. I don't remember if you were on the commission. But it used to be a lot of people, he said. So bottom line, we have an election in progress right now. There's a lot of challengers, and they're not here speaking about the budget. Where are they? I mean, come on. This is ridiculous. If they care about the city, they should be here speaking.
I guess they think we're doing a good job.
I know from the debate there on Tuesday, that's not the case. So anyway, just saying. So the BAB met three times, I believe. The process is engagement activities, attend a BAB or commission BAB joint workshop, participate in a rate-setting discussion, submit budget recommendations using City Balancing Act tool, connect with your city commissioner, attend the September budget hearings, we're doing that now, request a budget presentation. But bottom line is, I attended. I attended by Zoom. I walked the streets to get there, to do the job as a citizen. I propose that this commission needs to look at seriously creating an independent citizens group that parallels the budget process and does a checklist.
We have that. It's called a budget advisory board.
No.
That's an independent citizens group. We each have that opportunity to appoint members to that group. The chair is sitting right over there in that chair. And they're always available to answer any questions or take any comments that you have with regard to budget items.
Mayor is a former member of an advisory board. I well know, they're fellow lobbyists, and that was talked about earlier this week.
Jeff, are you a lobbyist? No, okay.
How many lobbyists does he have? You're sure?
On that board? We're just talking about that board. The budget advisory, there are no registered lobbyists. Uh, is he a registered lobbyist? Is he a registered lobbyist? Okay, I take that back.
Okay, so that's a good exchange we just had here to show that we need an independent,
Well, we have an independent
not the budget advisory board, but a separate, totally citizen populated, taxpayer populated audit group that just parallels. They just have a checklist, they're in the meetings, they have the participation process, not being told the meeting's too long, we can't hear from you.
But we've had budget hearings here, and you're here tonight. If there, I mean, we have opportunities here. You're welcome to question those things. You're questioning the process as opposed to the items.
That's exactly it, Mayor, the process. And that's what's bringing me to this point here. We're gonna, you voted in favor of everything today. Has there ever been a vote where you didn't approve something in the history of this city, in this century?
Because we've worked to this point. We got to this point, working with the advisory board to go through, the budget's like this thick.
I know.
And you've seen it?
Yes.
And you have, and you're saying you've never had an opportunity to question items on there?
Not this year. I followed the recipe. The recipe was given to me by the city manager. Apparently approved this booklet. And it was given to me, and I followed the recipe, and today I'm speaking to say, I didn't get to participate in baking the cake.
Okay, in the future, God willing, I'm reelected. You, my door is always open, my phone's available. If you ever want to meet with me to talk about budget items, I'm there for you. And that's always been the case. I'm sorry you feel closed out of the process. It's not intended to be that way. So, and again, we recommend working with the budget advisory board, which is a citizen-based advisory group. Any one of those members, whether they're appointed by that particular district commissioner or any member is open to listening to what you have to say with regard to the budget. Is there something tonight, now that you're here, it's the last item, we have time. Is there something in particular you want to explain your opinion about?
I would just like to know when the last time there was a budget item in this public hearing process of Fort Lauderdale was actually voted down.
Well, because a lot of the work is done before we get to this meeting.
But I'm talking about history, not about your work. I'm talking about the history of the city. Is this process really lead to any solutions?
I've voted against the budget in the past as a commissioner.
Did you?
Sure. When we used to take money out of the water and sewer funds, when we drained that $20 million, the last year I was a commissioner, I voted against that budget. So there are opportunities. Any one of these commissioners can vote for or against anything that comes before it. So to answer your question, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, appreciate the time.
I don't want you to feel shut out of the process. It makes me feel like, it turns my stomach that someone thinks, we go out of our way, we send out, we prepare magazines, we have an advisory board, we can't, we have online opportunities to read what goes on in the city. We have neighborhood meetings. Your district commissioner comes to your neighborhood meetings. You have opportunities to question all that. You know, what else do you want us to do?
Well, let's do it again, and this time put the recipe in here a little bit more specific that we, the people that walk the streets, that pay the taxes, will actually be heard at a BAB, actually be heard at an advisory board meeting that we attend.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, would someone, anyone else wish to speak on this item? There being none, someone please move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman? Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. The final total of all funds budget for the city of Fort Lauderdale is $1,193,279,369, which will fund the various operations of the city of Fort Lauderdale for the fiscal period beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025. Someone would please like to introduce the resolution adopting the final budget for the city of Fort Lauderdale for fiscal year 2025?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida adopting the final budget of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025, which includes the budget for the general fund, Water and Sewer Central Regional Wastewater System Fund, Stormwater Fund, Community Redevelopment Agency Fund, Self-Inured Health Benefits Fund, Debt Service Fund, Sanitation Fund, Parking Fund, Building Fund, Central Services Unified Customer Service Fund, Vehicle Rental Fund, City Property and Casualty Insurance Fund, Airport Fund, Grants and Bonds Fund, Cemetery System Fund, Project Management Fund, Arts and Science District Garage Fund, School Crossing Guard Fund, Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, Beach Business Improvement District Fund, Nuisance Abatement Fund, Sunrise Key Neighborhood Improvement District Fund, and Police Confiscation Funds, adopting the final City of Fort Lauderdale Personnel Complement for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025, and providing an effective date.
All right, before we begin the vote, I want to, on behalf of this commission, I want to thank the budget advisory board and everybody that worked out for many, many hours throughout the course of the year, putting this together. Thank you for your commitment, your volunteer commitment in making this happen. I want to thank all city staff who work unbelievably hard to make sure that we can make ends meet in this city. I know $1,193 million, it sounds a little, you know, we should be able to make ends meet, but you know, we have a lot of expectations of this community for service and so forth. And so I'm happy to see that you've been able to allow us to continue the good service that the city does provide year after year. So thank you, everybody. Anyone else that want to make any comments? There being none, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman? Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, and Budget Eleven is now approved. Is there any further business of the commission with regard to this budget hearing? There being none, meeting is concluded.